Hi Julie.
Peggy Kane, member of the school committee.
And Thomas Talbot, member of the school committee.
Patty, would you like to share with us a brief introduction to start us off?
Terrific. First of all, thank you so much for having me visit today. I have had a fabulous day here in Wilmington. I've had the opportunity to go to every one of your wonderful schools. I've had the opportunity to meet with central office staff, with all of the principals, with parents, with staff. And it truly has been a pleasure. So, thank you for having me. So, I know many of you have seen my resume, perhaps some of you have seen it online, but I would like to just share a little bit about myself at this point. I am currently the Assistant Superintendent in Melrose. I've been there for 11 years. Prior to that, I was the Special Ed Director in Georgetown. I was there for 10 years. I live in Georgetown. My three children went through the Georgetown Public Schools. I have been sharing with staff that I'm very excited that my youngest is a senior and she is graduating from college. So, I have paid my final tuition bill. So, I'm very happy about that. And I started off in this profession of education with absolutely no intention on being an administrator. I started off because I loved teaching. I loved working with children. I loved that moment that you connect with a student and you go, "Ah, they got it." I truly enjoyed that component of my life. And at some point, our paths kind of evolved. And I found myself, to be honest, thinking about some decisions that I saw administration make. And I didn't understand them necessarily as a classroom teacher. And I thought, "You know what? Instead of complaining about it, I think maybe I'll try to be an administrator." And so, my path has evolved to this moment in time. But I always think back and reflect to my time in the classroom as an important component of remembering why we are in this business. And that business is about that aha moment, that time when you connect with a student. So, I'm privileged to be here. From what I have seen, you have committed teachers. You have tremendous community support. You have what I describe as good bones. A lot of things to work with here. And I'm very excited to be proud of this process. So, I look forward to having a dialogue with you today.
Thank you. I think to keep us organized, what I'd like to do, if my fellow committee members agree, is we'll just each take a turn and go down to the line. I'm looking at Mr. Mullis to my left first. And we'll circle through until we run out of questions or we get tired. Yes, okay. Mr. Mullis, would you like to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. So, you spent quite a long day here in our district and spent time meeting with the community, talking with the teachers, members of the school staff. So, my question is, could you tell me how our district compares to or is different from the district that you're currently working with now?
Sure. So, I think there are definitely some comparisons. Melrose also enjoys a collaborative working relationship with the city side. Melrose is a city, not a town. So, there's a little bit of a different organizational structure there. But Melrose too enjoys a collaborative relationship with our city. That seems to be evident in Wilmington as well. Very important for the town and the school district to work in collaboration. So, I think that's a similar aspect. I think another aspect, in addition to the community support, is the teachers. I am going to brag and say that I also think Melrose has some fabulous teachers. We're very proud of the work we do. That time our students have in front of teachers is critical. And when I was walking through the buildings, I loved the tone of the buildings. The elementary schools were productive. There was a buzz that was exciting. Kids were engaged in learning. And one of the things that I think is also important is when I go into a classroom that it's not only the teacher's voice that I hear. I want to hear kids talking with each other and learning from each other. And that's what I heard today. I think a lot of that is similar. I think there are some things that, again, not knowing every aspect of Wilmington, I think we, one of the questions I asked was about where are things in regards to your report cards? And at the elementary level, I understand that you have a standards-based report card. So, I'm very interested in that. In Melrose, we have taken some significant steps towards competency-based education. And we've done a lot of investigating. We've visited communities in Maine, communities in New Hampshire. We actually went out to San Diego. We have a team going to Philadelphia to look at communities where competency-based education is already established. And in competency-based education, you're really making a shift from traditional grades and thinking about grades as that sequential first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And instead, you're shifting to the idea of competencies at each level. So, you might have a student who's working on third-grade ELA competencies, but they're working on fourth-grade math competencies. And so, it allows for a lot more flexibility in looking at how students are performing. So, I see that as Wilmington is not in that position and may not be in a direction that Wilmington wants to go in at this point. But it's just an observation. I also think that there are some similarities when I look at some of our challenges around science curriculum and the scores. I think many communities are sharing those same challenges. I see some differences in potential maybe to utilize some resources. One of the conversations I've had today was how we were a few years ago in Melrose. Our middle school and our high school had very different schedules, which did not allow us to utilize resources between the two buildings. And we worked hard to kind of put our schedules in alignment so that if you have a Point III teacher at the middle school and you need a Point III teacher at the middle school and the high school, you can share that person because you have the same schedules. So, that's something that I see that's different here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, how do you use data to make decisions? So, kind of following up on this competency-based model. But how do you use data to make decisions about programs being considered as either additions, modifications, or deletions? And then, what type of data is most useful in making those decisions?
Well, we have a lot of information available to us. Lots of different forms of data. So, we certainly can look at data such as information on standardized tests. We can look at our enrollment numbers. We can look at our, how many students graduate? What type of experiences are they going to post-secondary? We can look at information a couple of years out from that. So, just because kids go to perhaps college, are they staying in college? Do they have the skills that they need to be successful after? We can look at those big kind of pictures. And I think those are important information to look at. But then, we can also look at classroom data, much more specifically. How are we keeping pace in our math program? Are we keeping up with pacing guides? Are we generally in the same place at all of our fourth grades? What does that end unit test look like? That's data. So, we should see some similarities if we've been instituting some consistent practices across the district. So, all of that type of information is important data. There's also more qualitative data. How are people feeling about their experience? How are students feeling about what's going on? What are their thoughts? Are they excited about the opportunities they have? Are they engaged in the curriculum? Do they like the components outside of the classroom? How are kids at the middle school feeling? I think those are important things for us to find out about. You can find that out through conversations with kids. You can find that out in a more formal way through surveys. In addition, how are parents feeling? Taking all of those type of informations. So, I think the first thing whenever we're looking at data is identifying what the issue we want an answer to is. And then, what are the best pieces of data to help us? Because you're going to get lost in all, there's a lot out there, all right? So, identifying what the issue is. And then, choosing carefully what are the pieces that are accessible to us to help us make that type of decision?
Feel free.
Okay.
Can you just give us one example of one specific way you use data in your district to then make a decision about a program?
Well, let's think of a good one. All right. Maybe a topic that you've had some discussion on, I'm not sure. But one of the issues that we have recently explored is the beginning and end times of our school day. So, we kind of started along that path with actually concerns coming from parents, particularly at the high school level. So, we had some parents who were concerned that the day was starting too early for our ninth through 12th graders. And we had community forums, we talked about that. We also looked at research that actually does support that adolescent brains function not their best at 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, that a little bit later start time for adolescents can be more productive for them. And we surveyed families. We surveyed students. We needed to find out information about after-school activities. How many students engage in different sports? What's that impact of having later end times? So, if kids at the high school start later, they get out later, how does that impact all of those pieces? We had a task force organized in the district to gather all that information and have conversation. And ultimately, that group made a decision and recommended a later start time. And we will be implementing a later start time for next year.
From the standpoint of your own career, what would be three of the most important accomplishments you have made as an educator in the past five years? And what do you see as one of your or two challenges upon which you would focus if you were appointed as superintendent of our schools?
Okay, so, three accomplishments in the past five years in my career. And then, what's your second part?
What do you see as one or two challenges upon which you would focus if you were appointed as superintendent of our schools?
All right. Let's start off with, when I came to Melrose, I started in there as the position of Director of Special Ed. I'm not sure what my title was at that point, but you know, that's basically what the job was. And we were, we had this great early childhood center, this little early childhood center, the Ripley School. Fabulous, people loved it. They had this crazy lottery system of how you could get in there. And so, there were more parents who wanted to access this fabulous early childhood center than we have space for. And then, we had in one of our elementary schools, one first-floor area with some other preschool programming that was integrated but more directed towards our kids with more significant disabilities. And when I got there, I was like, "Wow, this is, like Ripley is fabulous. They've got great things happening there. Exciting, passionate teachers." Clearly, the community loved this program. And we also had great things going over at this separate piece. But we did have this two thing going on. We happened to be in the process of just completing our middle school. So, this building was going to, had been swing space while we did the building. And so, they moved back into the new middle school. And so, we kind of had this building, the Franklin, which we had also continued to have an early intervention program in the basement. So, we could continue to use that space. And we brought both of those programs together under one roof, the Franklin Early Childhood Center. And so, our model in Melrose, we have one early childhood center. We have almost 350 three- and four-year-olds in that building. Our programming has grown. We now have all of our classrooms. We started off and build it and they will come. It's continued to expand. And we brought the strengths from both of those programs together. So, each of those teachers could learn from one another. We had our special ed kids integrated in a more effective manner. And it really serves for many of our families the start of a long-term relationship in Melrose. They start off at our ECC. And we're talking about three and four, and then 12 years. Okay, 14-year relationship with the school district. So, starting off that early childhood center in a strong manner, a place where families feel comfortable and start to understand what Melrose is about, was a critical component. And that was really certainly under the direction of the superintendent. But that was a lot of my work, bringing that program together, those two programs together. So, I'm absolutely very proud of the Franklin Early Childhood Center. That's one of my accomplishments. I've also been very fortunate to have great collaboration with our community. In Melrose, we have an organization called Melrose Alliance Against Violence. It's a community organization focused on preventing domestic violence. And we had this opportunity to apply for a competitive federal grant. And it was a challenging grant process, very labor-intensive. And we were fortunate, this was our first round, this was three years ago. We were one of seven communities across the country to get this grant. One of the communities that got the grant was Los Angeles. So, we were in competition with a wide range of communities. And that grant, we brought in $465,000 into the community of Melrose and into the school community. And the focus of that grant was around teen dating violence, preventing teen dating violence. And you know, it's not that teen dating violence is a significant issue in Melrose. But truly in my eyes, having one incident of teen dating violence is too many. And we were able to partner together with Melrose Alliance Against Violence and bring in programming into the middle school and high school. One of the programs we worked with was called MVP, which is Mentoring Violence Prevention. We were able to train students in this program. We were able to train all of our coaches. Because part of the process is making sure that kids have trusted adults that they can seek out. And we see our coaches as a valuable resource in the district. It's not always a teacher. It's not always a counselor. And for some kids, coaches can be critical components in their lives. So, we trained all of our coaches in this MVP program. And then, in thinking about grant money, sometimes you're so excited, you get this money and bring stuff into the district and it's exciting and you get this new program. And you're like, "This is fabulous." But then, the money stops. So, you're like, "All right, now what are we going to do? We've got this great program going on." So, partnered with our athletic director and who is also head of health and wellness. And we actually built an elective program into our program of studies at the high school for MVP. So, students can now take that as an elective course and continue to think about and talk about, you know, bystander training, healthy relationships, how to do a good breakup. That's part of the whole process. And so, I am just thrilled that we were able to bring that in. And I will say that we did a great job managing that grant. And another round came out. We applied for that grant. We're extending our work into the elementary school because we got the grant again. This time, the grant is over $600,000, spread out over three years. And it's going to allow us to bring in counselors at the elementary level with kind of a trauma lens. So, it's about kids exposed to violence, all right? And that could be from a domestic violence lens. But it can also be about kids who are affected by some type of trauma in their lives. So, that's another piece that I'm happy about. This was probably not a great question because I think I could talk a long time about those things. So, I'll do my third thing quick. I know you're coming up with your coordinated program review. So, a coordinated program review is something that the state does to every district every six years. They come in and they take a look at your special education, your civil rights, and usually your English language learners. So, I'm not exactly sure if they're looking at all three of those when they come to visit you or not. But we had our coordinated program review last year. And we were, as far as special education and civil rights, we were 100% compliant. And that is a very small percentage of communities across the Commonwealth that able to maintain and reach that. And I will tell you that that did not happen overnight. Changes in policy procedures around special education is something that I've worked hard to put into place. And I'm very proud that we were able to go through that state process and come out with 100% compliance. So, those are my three. So, I'll do that piece, so I can, your other half?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no, I can do that.
I'll repeat it. So, what do you see as one or two challenges upon which you would focus if you were appointed as our superintendent of schools?
So, I think the first thing that I would focus on is getting to know what is celebrated in Wilmington. What are you doing fabulous? What are you doing well? And what maybe are areas that you need to grow in? I have some ideas about that. But I really need, as we talked about in the other question, I need some time to gather that data. And I'm going to learn that certainly through paper. I can read, I actually copied every, the MCAS stuff or all the buildings and stuff. You know, I can look at those pieces. But the other piece is the valuable component of visiting today and talking with people, hearing what people are concerned about. In the parent group, I learned a lot hearing about questions, talking with some of the administrators today. You know, I think there maybe is some areas that I'd want to investigate and learn more about would be about consistency of practice across the district in a couple of areas. So, how is the experience in the fourth grade across the district? There should be a similar experience happening for kids in each classroom as far as implementation of curriculum, expectations. I heard some information, some conversation, again, about that kind of consistency. What's that experience? So, that's something I'd be interested in understanding. And if I found that was an area of some need, I think that's an important piece. I think there should be consistency across the experience for kids, regardless of what elementary school they go to. And then, I think when you look at the middle school, the same kind of consistency based on, should be a similar experience regardless what team you're on as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there. You, in answering Mrs. Burns' questions, you did share some examples of some of the partnerships you established in your community. So, how would you describe the superintendent's role in the greater community outside of our school buildings? And maybe in doing so, give us some examples of how you have worked with municipal leaders, selectmen, mayor?
Well, the school district, the school is part, only part of the larger community. We're actually... We're actually, although a big part, clearly, when you think about the big picture of Melrose is a city, Wilmington a town, we're still part of that big picture. So we also, we have our police department, our fire department, our public works. All of those departments have to work in collaboration with each other. I understand that here, you, public works, has your custodians and those pieces. So you've got to collaborate, you've got to work with each other. Talking about athletics, management of fields, those pieces, got to work with each other, need to talk with each other. I think in that larger picture, again, as a superintendent, certainly your focus is about what's happening within the schools, but you also need to be visible at, in Melrose we have Victorian days in the fall. You need to be part of that, you need to be visible at community events. We have a mayor, and the mayor would run the beginning of the school year on the playgrounds, a day for families and, you need to be visible at those things. You need to be out, and not just to be visible, but to actually enjoy those activities. I think communities have great fun things happening. And part of being a superintendent is being part of not only the school community, but the community as a whole. My journey to this point has been in part to hopefully find a community that wants to embrace me as much as I want to embrace them. So some of those pieces, I think that visibility piece is important. In my current setting, we collaborate with, we have a legal department in Melrose. We collaborate with them around our contract negotiations, they sit on our teams. So I very often am working with their legal department on various issues. We, again, the mayor in our community, actually, he just left at the beginning of February, he's gone to Linfield, but sits on school committee. So that working relationship is built right in. So the mayor is a school committee member. So that is, you know, constantly communicating, sharing information, working together, because I truly believe that the adults, whether they're in the town side, the school side, community, I truly believe that adults have kids' best interests in mind. And we do better at making decisions for kids when we're working together.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Kane?
Thank you. I'm adding this, I'm adding, this isn't what my original question was, but you're talking about consistency, really struck home with me. And I'm curious as to, when you speak consistency and you talk about it with the administrators or whoever does the curriculum basically across the community. I've found in the past, in my teaching experience, that that meant for teachers, that we can't be individuals and we can't have what, we can't, don't have time. We don't have time to get that information done or to do it the way they thought consistency meant. The actual lesson should be the same, the actual time, and I hear around here sometimes that on week two, you have yours done, but I don't have mine done. So they take that as a negative. How is there a way to do consistency so that you, it comes out as a very positive thing rather than a negative?
That's, that's a great question. Yeah, that's an interesting, interesting viewpoint. I think when I think about consistency, I'm thinking about, maybe another word you could put in there would be equity. Because I think it's important that each student in Melrose, again, wrong community, in Melrose I think that too, but here in Wilmington, I think that it is really important for each student in Wilmington to have equity. And when I think about equity, that means not identical, consistency doesn't necessarily mean identical, that I am reading, you know, script on how you approach a lesson, no, that's not what consistency mean. But it does mean similar access, it does mean similar exposure to the curriculum, so that when we're looking in long term, we're guaranteeing, as much as we can, that kids are having that similar experience throughout the school district. They're having access to the same experiences, the same material, doesn't mean it has to be exactly the same way. Alright, so consistency, I think, another word I would kind of switch in there would be equity. And I do think teachers can really relate and feel strong about kids having equal access and that, that consistency and equity, if you think of it that way. Doesn't mean identical.
Thank you. It's great. Mr. Calvert?
The town of Wilmington, you know, over the past few years has seen a lot of teachers exiting. How, what would you do to, you know, keep them here or bring them back?
So I'm not sure what the, why people are leaving. I think there's absolutely a percentage of teachers that every year you are going to have some changes. People buy a house, get married, seek advancement, so maybe you have people who are teachers who want to become assistant principals, things like that. So you're always going to have some changes. I think that's, that's natural for all districts. If your data suggests that you have a higher-than-average situation, then I would want to understand what the reasons for. I'm not sure, again, in your process, if exit interviews are standard procedure, but I think that would be a good thing if they're not. Having exit interviews to understand why are people leaving? Is it about, I don't know, like, I don't know what those reasons might be. Culture, is it about caseload, is it about pay, all of those pieces? So it would be important to understand what the issue is. Again, you need to identify what those causes are, so that you can then start to form a solution to it. I'm going to toss out the idea that if that has been an issue, I think in recent years, there has been some challenges with your leadership. And I think that when that is happening, it is felt within the district as well. When you're not clear on kind of your direction and where you're going, sometimes people might seek some more certainty in that area. So if that was an issue, I would start with trying to understand why, and then you could work on what those pieces were.
Mr. Mullis?
Can I piggyback on Tom's question? Tell me how you go about collaborating with teachers and administrators in the district? And more importantly, how do you deal with them when they express views that you oppose?
I actually think it's important to have an atmosphere where there is an exchange of ideas. We do not have to agree on everything. I think it's actually unrealistic to think that we would always agree. Every administrator, every teacher, every parent, every student, that's not going to be a realistic goal. I think that if you were to talk to administrators and staff in Melrose, I have a reputation for being an approachable individual. People feel that they can come and talk with me. They can express their ideas, we can disagree. Disagreement sometimes spurs other thought processes, can be a creative aspect of problem-solving, makes you think about things from a different lens. But disagreement is always done in a respectful and professional manner. So we can talk, staff can disagree, principals can disagree. And at times, I could change my opinion, and at other times, I'm still going to have to go in a certain direction. And if I don't agree, if we have disagreement, I want to explain what my decision is based on. What data am I basing my decision on? And, so I don't think disagreement is necessarily in, of itself problematic. I think it can be an important part of a collaborative process. And it's important that people feel safe to give their opinion, even if it's not the same as mine.
Thank you.
Patty, can you describe some of the, I'm kind of switching gears a little bit, can you describe the PD opportunities you've provided in your district related to special education?
So my most recent PD offering was in regards to trauma-sensitive schools. So looking at trauma as a component of some students' lives and experience, specifically related to behavior. So when we have students in our classrooms and our schools that have behavior, I've always viewed behavior as a form of communication. What is a student trying to tell us? Doesn't mean that because you have a student with behavior, that that's automatically a trauma background, that's not what it means. But what I was working with teachers on and paraprofessionals was to expand their lens to think about what might be the possibility of this behavior? What could this be coming from? And trauma could be a possibility. So expanding the lens, also talking about, there's actually changes that happen within the brain for kids who've experienced trauma, and what that might look like in the classroom, and then talk about what could you do? What would be some strategies you could utilize in the classroom? What resources do we have in the district to help in those areas? That's been one of my most recent ones. In addition, I've done all kinds of training around kids on the autism spectrum. We have a system in our district for staff or paraprofessionals who are interested in providing home services as part of a student's IEP, that they must do 10 hours of training. And we use a program, it's called Autism Modules, and it's probably another word in between there. And it's an online component where there's pre- and post-test in those pieces, so I've organized that training piece. And I think probably two years ago, I actually had all of the paras go through that process to expand everyone's skill set around PD. In addition, there's always the kind of work that special ed teachers need to do around writing good goals and objectives and all of those pieces. So we've certainly done some of those technical kind of trainings for our special education staff.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
I have another, a little extensive question, so I'll try to read it just quickly.
MJ's the one with these.
Okay. There's been a new discussion taking root in the world of education. Chinese philanthropist, internet and technology entrepreneur and educator Jack Ma lectures that in order for our children not to have to compete for jobs of the future with machines, we need to abandon our current practice of teaching knowledge-based skills and instead teach them soft skills, such as values, believing and independent thinking, caring for others, building individual and unique skills within our kids. Dr. Bill Daggett, founder and chair of the International Center for Learning and Education, speaks of the Fourth Industrial Revolution, the world is currently entering, and how education needs to move forward towards more rigorous and relevant skills and knowledge for our students in order for them to be able to access the jobs of tomorrow. My question, what is your view of this new discussion? And if chosen as superintendent, how well or could it drive education within our district?
Okay. You've been very thoughtful in your questions, MJ. So I think that I would, I think the process of education, I guess in some ways I would argue that that's not necessarily a brand-new conversation, okay? In that, depending on your viewpoint, I guess.
Well, as a school committee member, it's fairly new to me, and I wasn't.
Okay, so my viewpoint has been always considering the education of the whole child. And that's kind of what I'm hearing in what you were saying, that our jobs as educators is to think about the whole child. So we are looking at the social skills, the soft skills, the social-emotional learning, those components. I think if you have had an approach of thinking of the whole child, you have thought about that. And I think a lot of our teachers have thought about that. I think what some of the pieces are, is that we're putting that, as opposed to the natural instincts of teachers to do that, we're putting that more formally into social-emotional learning, those components. I think that we do have to make some shifts in preparing our students for the future. I think our jobs, I think the experiences do draw upon collaboration. I think those are important components that students need to make sure that they're working, able to work as part of teams. And sometimes those teams might not be in the same room, but they're still part of teams. Learning to work with each other through different methods. So for instance, just working on a collaborative project and you're using a Google Doc, like, that is a skill that our kids should be able to do. So that you can go online, I can add to it, you can add to it, we can come up with a component, we can do some of that work, we might work together on occasion. I think we have to be more flexible in thinking about that process. I think we have to be more flexible in thinking about that process and the product that we ask kids to have. So I would, I feel as though we've, a lot of teachers do that, but we've been formalizing things more, and we've been putting that as, embedding it in our curriculum and looking for those opportunities. So I think that would definitely play into, I think, the direction of Wilmington. I think it's a direction that many school districts are going to need to go into.
Thank you very much. I would say, some people may say the superintendents need to be masters at public relations. In a delicate situation, and we all know Wilmington has seen our share in the past few years, how do you ensure that our greater community, parents, staff, municipal leaders, get the information that they feel they need to feel comfortable and safe while maintaining the necessary privacy that comes up and following the law?
I think, again, many districts find challenging situations that arise, and at times, we have personnel issues that we can't necessarily share all the specific details. We have different legal restraints. So those are realities we have to deal with, okay? The challenge is that we are a public body, a public education. Community members need to have information. I think in those situations, it's critical to put out the information that you are able to put out, and then explain why you cannot share additional information. And I understand that sometimes that's really hard, but it is a reality. And part of the superintendent's job is to communicate in an effective manner. It still may not be everything that the public wants to hear, but part of my job is also to make sure that we are following all of our legal responsibilities as well. And on occasion, those two requirements might come in conflict, and in those times, the best you can do is to be clear about the information that you can share, and also to say why I can't share more.
And as a follow-up to that, how would you describe the relationship between the superintendent and the school committee, and the various roles we each have?
Okay, well, as the school committee, one of your important jobs is to hire the superintendent, is to pass our budget, get our budget organized, be responsible for that piece. And there's certainly lots of other types of personnel, there's legal contract negotiations, all of those pieces are components. The policy development, working with you on that type of information that helps provide the structure that enables us to do our job, okay? The way that happens is, again, to feel that you can have open communication, conversations, school committee meetings. I've only watched one of your school committee meetings. When you announced the finalists, I did watch that one. And so I think, again, it's about, it gets back to communication. We have to, you hear from public in different ways than necessarily the superintendent does. You might have a pulse on certain components. You, at this moment in time, certainly know the community of Wilmington far better than I do. I would be looking to your support to bring concerns forward to me, to bring ideas forward to me, and that I would be sharing with you the works that my staff would be involved in, keeping you up to date on the wonderful work and the challenges, and partnering with you to see how we can solve those challenges.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Kane?
Thank you.
Got to put it out there.
Three different, three different things, and you did a really good, good question on that. I was going down the same path in a way, and I guess I'm just going to make mine shorter into the sense that, because Julie was able to kind of capture what I was wondering about. But one of the things I worry about is, and I don't mean this to sound negative in any way, I think we're doing a great job bringing in all kinds of help in having people in roles who are actually really doing their job and helping us to decide, how can we face something that's happening that we're not sure about? But in the wash here, I see lately that we spend so much time and energy on the students, which we should, but we have to leave some time left over for the teachers and the staff. And I feel we don't do that as well as we could. And I feel that it's the, I'm going to just say it, the administrative staff, who they do normally do a wonderful, wonderful job, but if you don't agree with exactly how things are going, and you're trying to encourage them to trust their staff and work with them.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? The more things get harder, the harder they seem to be getting for some people. And I don't think our teachers should worry about being safe in a building either. So do you run into this in Melrose? Do you get what I'm saying? I'm sorry, I'm being, my basic thing is, I want to know, why can't everyone feel safe in the buildings, and why can't we all trust each other as adults to know information that is not illegal to know, that is just, you've decided they're not going to know that, and then they have to answer to the parents and the other adults? That's basically what I'm talking about.
Okay. So thank you for sharing that with me. So I would think that I would not want to put staff in that position. I think that, again, I'm going to go back to that piece that even drove me to think about administration. And it really was from the lens of a classroom teacher that I didn't understand what and why certain decisions were being made. And that process has stuck with me as an administrator. I don't want my teachers to not understand why decisions, and it might be a decision that they don't like, but I think it's important for people to understand, and so there we go back to communication. So you're sharing information. I don't, I'm not exactly sure about, you know, the specific kind of piece you're talking about, but I think in general, it's important that everybody feels comfortable coming to work, whether they're a student or a staff, staff member, and that an atmosphere of safety, and by safety, I mean that teachers need to feel that they're supported, that they can express their viewpoint. They also need to feel safe to take a risk. As a teacher in the classroom, you might want to try something, and you should feel comfortable and safe to be able to try that. And you know what? Sometimes it doesn't work. And you shouldn't be like, oh my gosh, you know, the principal came in and this didn't work. That's how we learn. We learn sometimes from things that don't work out exactly as we had planned. As a teacher, believe me, I had thought I had a fabulous lesson for the day, and it all of a sudden goes south. You're not getting the same reaction that you thought you were going to get. I don't want teachers to stop taking risks. I want them to feel safe and comfortable in the environment and supported. And I think they feel that way when the environment supports conversation, collaboration, and disagreement, but again, in a respectful manner. Not sure that was where you're going.
That's a good start, thank you.
Okay.
There seems to be a growing trend throughout the U.S. where a lot of schools are looking down upon giving the status of valedictorian to the, you know, the senior class and salutatorian and things like that, trying to marginalize the amount of work that they did to get to that status. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I can share with you not only my thoughts, but my experience, because we have had that conversation, we've had that dialogue in Melrose. We had, had discussion with our staff, with community members, parents, administration, about that recognition of valedictorian or salutatorian. Part of that discussion came out of the, somewhat of the idea where, as we move towards more flexible types of learning experiences, that it's harder to compare apples to apples and come out with that, what does that grade point average mean? So if you have a student who's taken all of their courses within the traditional high school setting, and you have students who have taken more of a blended learning, so they're taking classes, and they're taking online classes, they're taking classes at the community college, how do you compare all of those different types of experiences and come out with a specific numerical value? So that was all part of the conversation. We actually ultimately discontinued the valedictorian process, and we did recognize students that were our highest achievers as a group, but we did not identify one person. We did that for, I think, two years. And students approached the high school administration and voiced their concern for reopening that dialogue. And we went through that process again, we had further conversation with students, and students really wanted us to return to that practice. And ultimately, the high school administration and the school committee reinstated that process. So we've been there, had that conversation, and it's, it is a challenging piece, you know? It's not as, I think, cut and dry as maybe it was 20 years ago, when everyone's experience was similar. As you explore more into blended learning and different types of opportunity, it's a little bit harder to think about those pieces. But we listen to our students, and we, again, have reestablished that practice in Melrose. So it's an interesting conversation.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, as chair, one of my roles is just to make sure that we are staying on track and we're staying organized. If I'm looking at the clock right, we've been at this for about an hour. Time is flying, I hope, for everyone, and we're getting some great information. Out of fairness to my fellow committee members, I just want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to ask those burning questions that you might have, while being respectful that we have two candidates tonight. So I just wanted, just to make note of that, but giving us enough time to ask what we want. Also, to the public, if you haven't had an opportunity to spend time with Mrs. White-Lambright, there is a community reception after our interview, so we will not be taking public questions at this point. This is our turn to, to ask questions, but you will have an opportunity afterwards, okay? So with that, Mr. Mullis.
Thank you.
What's another burning question?
Okay, well, I want to go back to the topic of communication and information. One of the challenges that we've had here for a couple of years, or probably longer, is social media. And we've had challenges where it affected teachers, it affected students. And I guess my question to you, and before the question, we all know it's not going away. We have a president that communicates through social media, we have parents, and we have teachers, and it's not going anywhere. So I guess my question to you is, what is the role of social media in education as a whole? And a couple of parts to this question is, how would you manage social media in the district? What do you see as positives in social media? And more importantly, how would you respond to negative issues that arise or that relate to social media when something comes up and everyone just starts going crazy on social media? How would you respond to that as a superintendent?
So this is, this similar kind of question came up with staff as well, when I met with staff. And you're right, it is not exclusive to Wilmington by any means. It is, I think, a challenge that all communities are dealing with. So I think that there are, again, a few ways. One, first of all, I agree with you. I think social media is part of our culture. It is a method of communication. The problem is, at times, that communication can be hurtful. People can say things that they feel they wouldn't necessarily say to somebody face-to-face, but they might be willing to type it, and unfortunately, they don't always associate their own name with it. So it's just out there, okay? And I think in, that's the negative side. The positive side is, it can be a great way to also talk about what's exciting, celebrate what's happening, you know, talk about what's going on in the classrooms, what kids have achieved, what teachers are doing, what innovative pieces are happening within the district, getting that information out, and people having a feel for what's happened, happening in the classrooms and being excited. So that's a positive way. I'm going to be, I think it is part of our responsibility within the school to help our students learn about social media, how to use it in a productive manner. I think that's one of the things that is part of our responsibility. I think it, again, can be incorporated and worked on through the larger culture of being respectful, demonstrating respect for one another within the school environment. I was very impressed with looking at the different schools' PBIS systems that they have in place with the Paws, all the different, you know, kids doing well in one of the buildings. In one of the buildings, staff give each other pause, which celebrates something great that they did. So I think building upon a positive culture of respect in our daily interactions, not for everyone, but will also help to translate positive interactions in social media as well. I think there's also some very direct support we could give to families around having parent information nights and workshops about social media. When I think, you know, I shared with you, my youngest is a senior in college. That's not all that long ago that she was in high school, and I, she wasn't involved with Snapchat. You know, that's happens, and I'm probably, there's already something else. And part of our challenge is to keep abreast of the different vehicles of social media, for us to be informed, to help inform parents, to, again, collaborate as a community. It's not, we have a role, but it's not only our job. It really is a community issue around social media. And I would hope that as our kids start to understand and utilize social media, that they could actually be good role models for some of the adults that aren't always positive role models within our community around social media. That might be a harder challenge, but I think it's something we have to work on, absolutely. But again, not just us, but also within the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, it's my last question, right? Okay.
Okay.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience with culturally proficient instruction with, within the school district, the role in schools, and any work you've done with teachers and administrators?
Okay. So up until this school year, I was also the civil rights coordinator in Melrose. So I certainly have a lens around civil rights issues, a lens around equity, and we have, I'm sure, similar systems that you have in place where through a curriculum review, so we rotate different subjects through curriculum review. And part of that curriculum review is to look at the materials that we're utilizing and to take a lens to make sure that we're representing a wide range of our students and our families and our community within all of our curriculum. So that's part of our structured review process. Okay? We have also taken, you know, again, I think you talked about challenges that, you know, you've had. We've had challenges at Melrose as well. And sometimes those challenges or those issues that come up might be difficult to deal with within the community, but also can spur some positive growth. We've done a lot of extensive work around understanding issues around microaggressions. We've done extensive work on involving our transgender youth within our community. We've done extensive work on collaborative problem solving with our students as well. So it's a, kind of a formal process of communicating in a respectful manner. And we've used those collaborative problem solving circles to address some of our feelings within a community in a safe manner. How do people talk about their differences? And that culture and that experience then also needs to be represented throughout our curriculum as well. So those are some of the things we've done.
Thank you. All right. We'll go for a short question.
Okay, okay.
What has been your greatest professional disappointment, and what did you learn from it?
My goodness, that is a challenging question. My greatest disappointment. Well, I guess, I think there's work that I've done that I've been, I've been happy about, that, I think one of my disappointments is when you're investing time, effort, and energy around some change within a culture, whatever, you know, those pieces are. And, you know, you do put a lot of time into that change, and I'm thinking about some of our inclusive programming for kids with special needs. And, you know, you put together some programming, you work hard around it, and you do a lot of work on culture and those pieces, and then you still hear a passing comment by a student in the hallway that's derogatory. And I'm disappointed. I am disappointed. And I realize how that kind of work never ends. And, but I'm disappointed when I hear that. I'm like, are you kidding me? We have done, I thought, like, we really worked hard on this issue. And it's hard to change all of those viewpoints. It's hard to change prejudice. It's hard to change people's ability to monitor their speech, if you will. And so when that happens, I feel disappointed. I'm not sure that's exactly, but...
That works. That's fine.
Yeah.
Perfectly fine. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna skip over to myself and let Mrs. Kane jump in.
Okay.
And I'll wrap things up.
All right.
Okay, thank you. This is completely off what we've been talking about, but how do you believe we should assess the student learning beyond the state and federal guidelines? The state and federal government has given us so much that's behind us all the time now. It's almost like, do we concentrate on that, or is there a way to get around that a little bit and we do what we feel is good assessment?
Well, I guess I think that those aren't necessarily disjointed efforts. Okay? I think that we, absolutely, we have standardized type of assessments, whether they be state assessments, whether they be the SATs, whether they be the AP exams. As adults, we have different types of assessments we have to take for licensure and those pieces. So I think that process is part of many people's experience, and I think we serve our students well by preparing them to be successful in those type of experiences. But I also think that the daily assessment, the progress monitoring that classroom teachers do is so valuable in helping them to direct their instruction. But I don't see those things as disharmony. I see them actually supporting one another. Because the daily progress monitoring that classroom teachers do to ensure that their students are on track supports the direction and the long-term connection to any kind of state and those type of assessments. So I actually see that as something that's done in tandem, and both are important. But, you know, you do hear things like, oh, are we gonna teach to the test, and that kind of thing. I think, again, what, we're not teaching to the test, but we do have standards that, again, I see as a vehicle for access and equity. And I think that's important for kids.
I think that only, one of the differences is the state and the federal tests cost us. The other testing we do on our own doesn't cost us like that.
Yes. And I'm very happy in my visits to see that there's definitely been some investment in infrastructure around technology as we go towards our assessment, state assessments being computerized, that Wilmington is in a better position to, again, think about access. Your students have the ability to access that. Definitely sounds like you've made some investments over the past year to make that a smoother process, so I was happy to see that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tobit.
Okay, so I have a short ten-part question. No, just kidding. I guess the question, the last question, well, not last, but why do you feel you'd be the best choice for this role?
Okay. No softball question there, that's, but I think that's a great question to close on. I think that's great. There was a similar question asked in the smaller interview piece. And I believe that you have had a couple of more challenging years with some leadership. You've had loss as a community, and that you do need an individual, again, from my lens, being part of Middle Sex League, being, you're a part of SEEM Collaborative, from my lens, looking into your district, that you need a superintendent who will bring your staff together, bring your community, bring your parents, bring your students together. I think you have many good things happening within the district. I think that experience needs to be celebrated and shared. I think that people need to feel comfortable, safe, supported, and re-energized to the process of education. I feel that there does need to be some healing within your community. And my process of looking for a superintendency has been, trust me, I'm interviewing you as much as you're interviewing me. I'm looking for a match for me and a match for my skill set. I pride myself on being a collaborator. I pride myself on being a good listener. I pride myself on being a problem solver. I think I have skill sets that could help your system at this moment in time to come together and then to move forward.
Great. Thank you very much. I would try to say that I could rewrite the question, but various similar thoughts, and I thought that would give you an opportunity in terms of a closing statement to us.
Yeah.
So I very much appreciate your time this evening. I think we've enjoyed our chance to get to know you. I believe that the community has an opportunity to spend some time with you, and we'll move forward in the process.
Right.
But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. I understand the time commitment, and this is an important decision, and I really wish you well in making that decision. I actually think my piece has been easier than your piece. So, good luck in your process. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.